Okay, ladies and gentlemen, six thirty. We're here in review session for a couple of things. We're gonna go over council rules, just committee assignments, just some give and take of, how our operations go. This is Patrick offered her services to really go over the meat and potatoes of kind of counseling one oh one in the field and getting stuff done. So actually, I'm gonna let you go first, Pat, and then any time you have afterwards, I'll kinda go over some of the stuff I've passed out and my stuff we can go over kind of indefinitely, so that's, so you have the floor.
Okay. What I'm doing is trying to give especially Mr. Sherman here the information he needs so he can report the stuff that he always gets the phone calls on. So that very first page, how I report, and it lists all the various things. And what's nice with the pot holes and the burned out traffic lights, even the dead animals, you can put those on the answering machine after hours, though, and they always get to them. But with the street lights, the police have asked if we would go ahead and turn those in ourselves, which is one less thing they have to do. And that's really the whole reason I'm doing this is because the police are inundated with the small stuff, and there's just not enough manpower in that department anymore, so the more we can do and help out our wards, it would be appreciated. So we just have some general stuff, garbage pickup issues. One thing I don't think a lot of people realize, the garbage cans can only sit outside twenty-four hours before your pickup. There's a lot that will be left for a week or something, they might have it sitting out there a week. But where we really ran into issues was large item pickup. They would set it out, you know, the very first week if their pickup was being on a Thursday or a Friday, so that's four or five weeks down the road. So hopefully, we'll be able to do garbage pickup, or not garbage, large item pickup, Mr. Greer?
For a decent length.
But still, with the yard waste, the brush and the leaves, and the Christmas trees, you just have to take them over to running. Maybe there's somebody in the neighborhood that would be willing to, if you've got an elderly person, and we do that for a couple in our neighborhood, we'll see them laying out, just throw it in the truck, take it with us, get it cleaned up. Commercial vehicles parked in residential area after dark, that's a problem in my ward. I think it might be in Dave Capon's and Nancy's, and it just seems you get these big huge slums. You know, the tractor park parking on the streets, they block, you make the streets narrow, they block vision when you try pulling out of driveways. But that one you need to give to the police, give them the address, and they'll take care of that. Handicap parking permits, those go through the service department. And missing building permits, the reason I put that down, we're losing a lot of revenue by people that are just doing work on the houses, having contractors come in to do work on the houses and not getting the permits. So you can always just call in at the building department, and if you see it on the weekend, call up, leave a message, give the address, and she'll check it. It's like today, I saw one who run East Fourth Street, and I called and checked it here, and sure enough, no permit. So, you know, that's just what we need to do, is be aware of that kind of stuff, because it brings in a little bit more revenue. The next staple bunch I've got here is have a ten day notice. And this addresses different types, there's three different forms that we use right now. One is for the weeds and the high grass, then you've got just junk and trash, and then you've got motor vehicles and semi trucks just parked in people's yards. But on the front, I've just gone step by step, and I'm gonna email everybody this, so we'll have the links on it, so you'll have the forms that you can fill out. But it's not hard to do, but if you can fill out, you know, first go and verify that there is actually a nuisance issue, and you're breathing it, go back, do the property search, fill out whatever form's appropriate, and then email it to Mr. Greer. And Mike will go ahead, and so you read it over, he'll sign it, and put it in the mail, and then he lets you know that he's done that. So the next step for that will be, you know, mark it on your calendar, you need to go back in ten days and check to make sure it's been taken care of. Because the two short staffs in the service department, there's really nobody, we don't really have a nuisance officer per se, so that's up to councils, we're willing to do it, especially in the ward members, that will just get your ward looking better a whole lot faster. And just so everybody is aware, the next sheet has example written on it, and if you go after ten days and your complaint isn't, you know, cleaned up or resolved, you issue another ten day notice, but then you also notice the nuisance board, notify me or whoever's maybe on that board, and then restart the nuisance process. And this notice of nuisance event is what that board sends out, and it covers not only the high grass and weeds, junk vehicles, and trash, it also takes care of barking dogs. The one, I get the most on is disorderly conduct, you're drunk and disorderly. And there's, the board has sent out two notices already this week, one was for a property at three thirty-three East Main Street, the police have been there twenty times in the last month and half, and they were there again right after the first year, arrested a couple more people for drunk and disorderly. So they got, you know, I need, this board needs two either violations or two ten day notices that have been sent to that property, but a combination. And then we move forward with it, and then that board will track that. So if we've got a real problem property, just let us know, and we'll, we have all the paperwork. And the good thing about it, I give a report later in reading, it's been very successful. Usually after someone gets the first notice from this board, because it can cost them two hundred and fifty bucks if they don't comply, and then we're more than willing to address the issue, even if it means, you know, evicting tenants. We've had that done, you know, resolve issues. So it's a program that works, but it's one that takes a lot of paperwork and just tracking.
So the actual property owner then is the one that's liable, so to speak, for that responsible for paying the fine or what have you?
And if they don't, if it ends up that they don't resolve it, and we assess the property for two hundred and fifty bucks, if they don't pay it, it goes on the property taxes. When they go and pay their taxes, any leads-
Oh, okay, that was my next question.
Yeah, or any outstanding charges are paid first out of what they pay for taxes. So if they only pay the regular amount, say their property taxes is five hundred bucks normally, but now it's seven fifty, well, two fifty, that five hundred's gonna go on and pay that bill, and then the rest will be applied to the taxes, so they will owe another two fifty on the taxes. So it's done a very good job of getting people's, you know, attention. And the last thing I've got here is how can I get rid of that? And this one's actually updated, I found that CHS TV, if you've got a TV, they will take it, but they do charge, and you have to take it to them. But, you know, it beats dumping it in the alley, unfortunately, that does happen. But I will email all council members, you know, all the stuff I've handed out, so you'll have it on your computer, and if you have any questions, just give me a call. And that's all I got.
Okay. Good, yeah, absolutely, it's open forum, yes.
Pat, did you bring a copy of the cheat sheet, by any chance?
I didn't.
You want me to make copies for everybody?
Do you wanna just email it to? I meant to ask you first.
If I can get my scanner to work. What I did was, Pat and I do a lot of these nuisances, and what I did was put together a reference sheet with the most common things, like leaving your car for forty-eight hours, more than forty-eight hours on the street, selling, washing, repairing vehicles on the street, parking on front lawns, commercial vehicles in residential areas, the ones that were most common. She printed up the three pages of the ones that are the most common, but we still have a lot of them, like people parking cars on the property and stuff, that's, that's turning into a big one too.
Major car history.
A lot of people are doing that, and it is against the zoning. And parking recreational vehicles, how many you're allowed to have, and they have to be on parking pads, they can't just be on the streets. I had somebody who had a boat in the front yard, four, I don't know, just one? Well, their yard was only big enough for one, but somebody had a boat in the front yard, and the neighbor called me, and we got rid of that. But it's, it's to try to keep the properties nice and to make them attractive, and you can't get things all over the place. So I will-
You have that with you, Nancy?
The-
Cheat sheet?
Mm-hmm.
I could scan it with my phone real quick, it says three pages?
Yep. You wanna do that?
Yeah, I'll do that real quick. Send it to everybody's email.
Soon.
And like I said, the police are asking for our bill on this, so we just really need to try, the ward candidates especially, really need to try and keep track of the ward the best they can, and the at-large candidates can help us out.
We're all supposed to have fluorescent bulbs now instead of the old light bulbs, and yet it's illegal to put them in the stream where they'll go to the landfill. What are residents supposed to do with fluorescent bulbs? That's something nobody has heard about.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll have to look into that.
Well, here's, right here, it's very helpful, thank you. Loads of chocolate will accept contact fluorescent bulbs at no charge.
Yeah, the contact one, I don't know about the long ones, so, yeah, I'll see what I can find out.
That's brand new, I've never seen that.
I'll see what I can do on that one, John, thanks.
I could be like me and hoard up on the old battery. If I can find an odd lots and lure them till they re, make, get some common sense and change the law back to sanity when it comes to us having whatever light bulbs they want, but that's a whole other story.
We get rid of regular light bulbs that are not pollutant, and we go to highly toxic pollutant bulbs, to save a little on electricity. Thank you, government, for regulating that.
Mr. Fawcett, aren't you part of the government?
What's that?
Aren't you part of the government?
That's, that's why you guys get, what, about five thousand dollars a year salary, and the congressmen get like a hundred and seventy-five, because they're, they're making way more smarter decisions than you guys are by forcing us to use light bulbs that are hazardous to our health and the environment, to save the environment.
What we are able to do is make decisions.
There you go.
On this level.
On a fairly timely basis.
All right, very good. Pat, do you have anything else? Anybody else have any comments? Like I said, this is kind of an open forum, this is kind of a discussion, town, you know, Pat, thanks for putting all that together. I would reiterate, especially you guys and gals in the wards, that's where you get, that's where you're really doing the most for your constituents, when you find those areas and actually reporting them and then getting the follow-up and cleaning them up, and that's, that was the fun I always, I mean, that was what I enjoyed actually most about being a ward council person, because that's, you're seeing results almost immediately, so.
One more thing I wanna say too, when you report them, we never say who gave us the information. We always report it as us.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
So if somebody says, well, don't say my name, we don't, we don't tell who took it.
Yeah, I never, and I've gotta have a list a mile long of stuff I turned in.
And you know something, I found to be just off the cuff that was somewhat effective, especially if you know the property owner, is they listen, you know, get ahold of them, and say, this place is dumb. I'm gonna, you know, before I report you, I, you know, I'm gonna give you a heads up, it's coming down the pike, but you're in violation of X, Y, and Z. And what I found a lot of times was could be like, one, they would play, oh, I didn't realize that, I'm sorry, I'll get to it, but a lot of times it's just a phone call from a council person, it, I mean, it, it goes actually a long way, probably more than you'd think it would, to that property owner, or go to the home. I used to go to some homes and say, listen, you know, I was driving through here, you got eight spare tires in the alley, and a car that's been there forever, I'm, I'm going to turn this in, and this one Barney was a nuisance officer, and I mean, he would be there overnight, but I'd say, I'm turning this in, and a lot of times, if it wasn't the elderly lady that really just couldn't do anything about it, they would, a lot of people would, would jump on that, so, you know, use your influence and cloud as a council personnel, you know, and then, then sic the dogs on them after that, but a lot of times you don't even, we don't even have to go that route, because they'll actually, you know, take your, you know, take you seriously. Anything else on that? Again, thanks, Pat, for throwing that together. Anybody else have any questions for Mrs. Patrick on that? Guys, what I put together, just real, real briefly, I, I guess I assumed you guys had this after the first go-round, was kind of, and I apologize, if I'd have known that last year when I stepped in, I would have put some of this stuff together. Real important, if you're in council, it's kind of important to have the council rules before you and then to refer back, and that's how we operate our business, and a lot of it, when you're doing it, you get to know it, but I know Beth kind of stepped in, just, you know, was appointed, and a lot of times that's not an easy thing to do, to step in and then start taking off with your, with your run, so to speak. But I did it, I just put together just a very brief packet, actually, the stuff that Mrs. Patrick passed out on the nuisance stuff would be a good thing, just to bind it up and keep it in here, so I know a lot of us communicate email and use electronic stuff, and with our iPhones, it's just more handy. I'm still a little bit old-fashioned too on some things, so I, you know, I, I got a backup, that's why I still assign both your committee assignments in, in paper, because I need to have the hard copies for public record, but also, I like having that as a backup in case, you know, the internet crashes or whatever.
Can you send this to us by way of email?
You know what, I, as of right now, I can't, because I only had a paper copy of this, so I, if we can find it, yeah, if Dustin wants to scan those rules.
I have an email copy that I can, or electronic copy that I can send you.
Okay, cool, yeah, if we've got this, because I was, I, all I had was hard copies of that now. So anyways, guys, just real briefly there, the, the council rules are pretty, pretty well spelled out, and it, and it kind of takes it through, you know, what kinds of meetings, the time, and a lot of people don't realize, our meeting days and locations and all that's set by basically our council rules per ordinance, so if we would ever change, have a separate venue for a certain time or things like that, we would actually, you know, have to send appropriate public notice out. You guys know we meet on the second and fourth Mondays, you know, at seven thirty here. Some other things I noticed that maybe you guys didn't know, special meeting, I, as the council president, if I'm not mistaken, John can't call a special meeting, can I? Three of you guys can, and/or the mayor, so just as an FYI, if there's ever a, a situation comes up that you guys decide, hey, you know, let's go ahead and get another reading on this, or what have you, three of you guys come together, you can call for that special meeting, as well as the mayor can. As well as, now on review sessions, and we've had some, some confusion at times with the mayor wanting to call for a special meeting when really he thought we were gonna do some sort of thing like this with a review session, the mayor can't call for a review session time. That can either be called by myself as the council president, or three of, three council members. So I think the week I was on vacation, Nancy didn't, you guys used that rule to call for the wellment, the people from Hopewell and the Mount City Group came, so just as an FYI, you know, you guys have that ability, you just need one to let me know, so we can make the public notice and whatnot, but-
Hey, Rick. Yes. For the benefit of Mr. Fawcett, if we can get away with him in committee meetings, I wish, you know, that's what we need to do, because if we call a review session, Mr. Fawcett has to be here.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and I tried to get John out of coming to this, but I was gonna call it a work session, since we weren't really doing anything legislatively, and he trumped me and decided he had to come by law. Pat and I had that, were emailing that discussion, so we, you know, we felt like we're basically, we weren't making any policy, we were really just talking about council rules and how to turn nuisances in, but if we meet as a whole, I mean, it either has to be in a special legislative or review session format, so, so yeah, absolutely. But again, the review session times, you know, take advantage of that, though, if you've got big issues out there, if you've got issues in committee that you want further discussion and bring council in, or if you've got like Nancy, actually Nancy's topic last week with the downtown development commission, that would have, you know, that could have been a review session, I mean, that, that would have been an appropriate forum to have that, you know, like I said, the only difference was John didn't have to be there, but I mean, everybody, I guess if we have it in a review session, you guys are very good about coming to things that, you know, other council members have that are important, like when the, we were dealing with the pool last year, I mean, people showed up to things that I guess you're not required to show up out of interest and love for the community, so, but for, just for your information, the review session times, though, are formal times that, you know, you guys can call, like I said, if you've got something in committee and you want a, a larger forum or, or the whole group's attention, just let me know, it's like any other thing, I need to give a twenty-four hour public notice to send out the, the, the public notice on that. I would prefer, I mean, other than tonight, I know we're probably gonna be in and out in record time with our one reading tonight of our, with, with basically all the, the committee assignments kind of rolling downhill now, not a whole lot of legislation in front of us, for, really for our clerks' sake, if we've got a big review docket of stuff, I would prefer not to have this on the, on the legislative meeting night, that's why historically we have done those on the off Monday nights, so, you know, because if we do a review session at six thirty, try to cram in, we did those before, and it's gotten, we've gotten down to the wire to get that transition in and get everything set up. I, I would prefer, I don't know, John, but you, do you have a, a horn to fire on that as far as?
Traditionally, it's on the off Mondays, so that's good for me, I mean, but I, I go along with whatever council wants to do.
And theoretically, we can, we can call them anytime, too, I mean, we've, we've just gotta have that twenty-four hour notice to get the press release, so the press could be here. I need a topic, I mean, I've gotta tell them what we're gonna be discussing, and kind of that, the bounds of that, you know, not going off and talking about eight other subjects, we have to have kind of a, a format of what we're gonna be discussing has to be known to the public before we go into that review session meeting, but, but again, you guys can call those at any time, three of you can, can call that the same as I can.
Two, let's see. The pool commission meets every two weeks, and has, has been quite long, that's for everyone's information, the twentieth is the next pool commission meeting, five o'clock in the mayor's office. Quite jammed lately, that's a lot of folks showing up for the meeting.
Good, good, absolutely.
Lot of big interest in that, a lot of good ideas coming up. It might be a good idea to stop in once in a while. Tonight, Mr. Fawcett, Mrs. Ainge, myself, we're there. But Lars Peterson is doing a fantastic job of chairing that committee. Just keep in mind, there's a lot of things going on to make it, make it work, to make it happen.
Good deal, and, and, you know, and looking back at last year, and, you know, hopefully we're avoiding some of the issues with that group and everybody coming together early, than, than kind of having to do that on the back end, like, like, like what happened last year in the middle of any kind of financial crisis we were in.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Why don't you say five o'clock in the, on the twentieth?
Five o'clock on the twentieth, and normally it's every two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Now, is the mayor's office open on the twentieth since that's the morning of the day?
What's that?
I said, is the mayor's office open that day since it's the morning of the day?
I'm sure that no one thought of that. I really don't know.
The mayor was there when we said he won't be there, so he knows about it, and maybe you asked him about it.
Lars, for the most part, made that statement that it would be every two weeks, so it's just possible that it may go another week, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll, I'll email Lars and let him know that that's what I was, and that's what I was looking for.
Well, let's go to, to rule five, is basically disposing of your guys' information with committee assignments and things. You look under section A, so the subject matter brought before the city council, so first we refer to the proper committee, which goes through my office, an official and, or official and that committee, or official shall by the time of the second regular meeting after the referral make a report there unto council. That's where, within your committee reports, even if something is longstanding, and you know you, you've got a project that you're working on or whatever, please bring that forward. The one, the one thing on some of those bigger issues last year, I had a hard time tracking those, was some of the, the ones kind of got lost in the shuffle, so no matter if you know, hey, we're, we've kind of tabled it now, keep reminding us that the assignment X, Y, and Z is still, it's in the law director's hands, or I'm still waiting for information here, or what have you, just it keeps us all, you know, up to speed on where that is, especially from my end, I got a little crazy at the end of last year, we had a hundred and forty-six committee assignments last year, and it, there towards the end, I was, especially when we got to the rollover part where I had to figure out what we were keeping to roll back over, it was just, you know, if I've got those notes and you guys are giving us regular updates on the status of those, obviously, once something's brought before on legislation, you report that that night, or every, every time it's up for read, you give a status, hey, support this, don't support it, here's what it is, but the things that are in committee still, that's either pending, project kind of stuff, you know, give us a status report, and by your own rules, you're supposed to do that after the second regular meeting after the referral. What I usually try to do as well, on the reporting dates, if you've ever noticed that, unless it's something that's really pertinent, where the auditor says, hey, guys, I really need you to get this up, I'll usually, if you look at the date that I give you, it's after that second reading from the date that I assigned it, or there's some, all the ones, this, this go-round actually was the full set up, first read, first meeting in February, because I had a hard time getting some stuff with my computer, and, and again, just getting those out, so the, all the original ones, rollover or not, were dated on the ninth when I started hammering those out last Thursday, and I literally gave everybody to the tenth of February to, where you would have to make that report, but that's what that date is on the committee sheet, when it says X to X, that last date is usually going to be that, that second regular meeting after the assignment's been assigned, that's when technically you need to be giving council as a whole an update during your committee reports. C is one that, if you read that, it says, "In a matter of protocol and courtesy, complaints from members of council concerning any department or city government should first be made to the mayor or the other elected official involved before the same are brought before or entertained by council." That's not saying you don't have an ability to complain about stuff, obviously, we do, that's your job. What that's saying is, is give that individual the courtesy of a heads up, that, hey, I, I, I came to you about this, or I'm coming to you about this, and, you know, don't do it five minutes before the meeting or what have you, whether it's, whether it's Jack, whether it's Luke, or Sherry, they're guests of ours here actually, or, or any department head that would be in attendance, give them that courtesy, give them a little bit of time, and obviously, if you've brought that before them and, and then, you know, on a follow-up, you're not getting the answers you want, it's your right and role as a legislator, as a council person, as a, as elected official, to bring those forward. But like I said, that's just a matter of council rule, and again, I don't, you know, if we never reviewed these before, a lot of us would, you know, would not have known that. Um, D, again, since I didn't have this in a set that, where I could type in it, if you look at D, this was changed last year by ordinance thirteen, three thirteen, I think, and that was Mrs. Neal's committee amended that, that, it says, "Once a subject is assigned to a committee, must remain that committee unless a majority of that committee votes it out of committee," the old language of your rules said a majority of council, that really didn't make much sense, how could a majority of council vote something out of committee when not all of council serves on that committee? It was, that, that didn't make much sense, so you guys amended that last year when you passed ordinance three thirteen, and it's gotta be a majority of that committee, so what that means is, when you look at your rules, as committee chair privy, if there's a piece of legislation, financial things that, that kind of have to kind of get moving quickly, you might not have enough time within a week to set a meeting, a council chairman can move a piece of legislation forward just with his or her approval, signature, what have you, send the appropriate paperwork into the law director's office, the process moves along. What a chairman cannot do, which a chairman could do when I was on council before, is actually kill a piece of legislation, or, or a request on their own, without, this rule here pretty much says that it takes a majority of your committee to vote something out of committee, not just the, the chairman's prerogative. A chairman has the prerogative to move it forward, but the chairman does not have the prerogative to, to kill the request, or kill the legislative request on their own, to vote it out of committee. If you're voting things out of committee just as a chairman, you're in violation of, of rule D there, so just keep that in mind, and again, those are some changes, I, I remember when, when I was on council, you know, you could do, you could move it forward as a committee chair, and you could also basically kill it, I hate to use that term, but you could kill a, a request as the committee chair as well, so, so it takes a majority of your committee to vote it out of the committee. Let's see. Some, some basic. A quorum for us to actually be meeting is five, there has to be five of you guys here for us to actually have a meeting, if for whatever reason, a flu outbreak, pandemic, everybody's on vacation the same week, and there's less than five of us, or we will not officially have a meeting, but-
Now, how does that go? Can we vote for an ordinance with only five votes?
Yeah, if, if, I don't, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, John, it cannot be a-
You have to have a majority of council to pass it, but-
You would not be able to waive any rules of any of that legislation that night, and you would not-
But you could pass it, and it, it would have to be unanimous. If it's four in favor and one against, it fails, even though the other four members of council, had they been there, might have voted in favor. So it's a little risky to take a vote on something with only five here.
And like I said, if you, um... In pretty much Rule, if you look through, again, um, kind of Rule nine through thirteen kind of goes into the different, and I'm not going to bore you guys with the details of, okay, if, if a piece of legislation is committed or taken from the table or laid on the table, those kind of things, it kind of pretty much spells what that is out. Um, like I said, I apologize, I, I, you know, I'm shocked you guys weren't providing copies of these to start your, the terms two years ago. It's just kind of important to know what rules you're, you're working under. And you guys have the ability, um, to change these rules at any time, I mean, it's through, through committee and legislative action, but it does have to be, um, any, um, any changes to these rules has to go through legislative process and amend them through going through committee and whatnot. So as you guys look at these, if you guys see anything, like I said, the, the one glaring thing there before was, how can you have a majority of council vote something out of committee when council isn't, the majority of council's not serving on that committee? Um, and then, like I said, the other, the other thing that, that was different is, is, is you as a chairman have the privy to move legislation forward, you don't have the privy to kill a piece of, uh, a recommendation or, or legislative request, just as the chairman's, um, privy.
If I could say something, I think that the original rule that you're talking about that did get amended was actually designed to give the whole of council authority to more or less veto a committee's decision to report something out of committee with no action. That rule was actually intended to let five members of the whole of council overrule a committee decision if the decision was to take no action. So, uh, I just offer that as a clarification. I think technically now it would take a seven-member vote of council to override or overrule the decision of a committee, because then you're going against the existing rules. And in order to waive the rules of council, you need several members. So if, if you understand what I'm saying, and if you do want to still give council the right by a majority vote of five to overrule a committee decision, not, not to take action on something, you might want to look further at that rule and put that in there. Only use better language.
Let, let me ask you this, then how would, if that was the case, and say the committee voted it out of committee, but, you know, this side decided they, they liked it, how, how is then that brought forward to legislation? Because there's...
Well, this side plus one...
Right.
Could direct the law director to prepare legislation on it.
I wonder if you've got something controversial that will happen? Uh, that happened with the year legislation about four times prior to we finally made, made it here, you know? And it was a controversial issue on day one.
And I think that's...
Committee chair took that rascal out of there four times.
And I think that's why the rules were changed to allow a majority, simple majority of council to override a decision of a committee, which at that time, as you've pointed out, sometimes was being made by the chair only, to not take action. Now, if council continued to want, a majority of council wanted legislation to come before it, but that committee that was being assigned to kept saying, no, then the majority still, of council still speaks louder than any one of its committees and can say, hey, we want the legislation. Madam Law Director, prepare the legislation and submit it to us.
So instead of being proposed by a specific committee, it'd be proposed by council members X, Y and Z?
Well, it'd be proposed by a majority of council.
What would stop another, uh, committee chair from volunteering to take on a, an assignment of that nature?
Well, nothing stops that, that then is up to the president.
That would be up to the president.
But you could have a situation where the majority of the committee to whom he has assigned a matter doesn't want to take action, and he doesn't want to take action. But still, if five members of the council, the majority of the council as a whole says, no, bring that legislation in front of us, then the intent of the old rule was to allow that to happen.
It was supporting...
Yeah, and as I'm saying, now it will take a seven-member majority to overrule the committee decision not to bring something forward, because you're suspending the rules and saying, hey, we want this legislation. I'll just bring that, you know, to your attention in case anybody thinks that's a real problem.
No, it's not a problem.
It'll actually comes up.
That's right.
So probably during our regular council sessions, somebody needs to propose that, uh...
Yeah, just to see how it works.
I think another one of, of the newer pieces, Eric, might be thirteen, I think it's thirteen E two, I think that's where we changed about the bringing things back from, uh, being tabled. I think after the red light cameras came back, uh, at third reading, after being tabled at second, a lot of people thought they were coming back at second. I think, I think that's the... And we changed it.
You can't bring something back on third, you can't read it the third reading after you bring it back once it's been committed or tabled or whatever. You cannot do the third reading as a surprise to everybody. That's what that's trying to eliminate.
Yeah. Which was a good thing.
Yeah, it's a change.
Everything else is pretty well spelled out. Like I said, I'm not going to bore you guys with reading this, uh, but I did want to go over, uh, to highlight some of those. I had this in front of you, obviously, uh, Mr. Showman, um, kind of just kind of getting an idea of this is kind of our, how we're conducting ourselves both in our meetings and as a legislative body. These are the rules that, um, uh, that bind us, as they say, or doesn't bind us. Um, and then, like I said, I just, um, since that one, um, rule there on the committees was something different from the copy that I had, I put a copy of last year's ordinance that Mrs. Neal's committee had, had passed, that, that three dash thirteen. Kind of further down, um, into the, the packet of stuff that I put for you guys, most, again, um, our order of business, how we conduct is kind of a cheat sheet of, of how our, our meetings go. It's spelled out in, in the rules, but it's all kind of there in one paragraph. This is a little bit, uh, um, more black and white and, and goes down clear to the end to adjournment. Um, it's got a quick notation there, um, just for, uh, what passage of, of various pieces of legislation take. A ra, piece of regular legislation requires five of the no, uh, nine. Uh, emergency legislation requires six, and suspension of the rules requires seven. And with that, and, and you're kind of getting up in the supermajority of our rule when you're looking at suspending rules. I mean, that's taking, um, seven of, of nine of you to say, hey, it's okay, we're not, we're not going to read this, or we're going to waive the three-day receive rule. Bill, do you understand what those, I mean, you've been to as many council meetings as, as, as a lot of people. Uh, when it comes, when it comes to that, um, emergency legislation, when you're looking at the end of that paragraph, um, and I always get this from constituents that paid attention, but sometimes didn't pay a lot of attention, like, well, that's not an emergency. That's not, you know, fire department's not meaning to be called, blah, blah. Uh, basically, what that emergency distinguish allows is that appropriations ordinance, that law goes into effect as soon as, as I sign it, and Jack signs it, and the clerk signs it. If it's not, if there's, if it's reg, if it's got, with code regular legislative language, then it takes thirty days from the time you guys pass it before it actually becomes law. So a lot of appropriations, whether we're spending three thousand dollars on a trailer or what have you, has emergency language, and everybody will say, well, there's no emergency to that. Now, the, you know, the house theoretically isn't burning down, but if we're going to appropriate that money, allow the, whatever department to buy that piece of equipment, that's what that means. And it does, like I said, it does require, you know, six out of the nine. So if it's somewhat of a controversial issue, it, it, um, if, if, if it could, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, John, it could pass with five, but then the emergency stipulation would come off in the thirty-day requirement for it to become...
That's correct.
Law would, would then go into effect, correct?
Correct.
So again, on that last page of that one, it's just kind of got a quick cheat sheet of how many votes are required. So again, think, I mean, think about this, if you're chairing a piece of legislation and you're passionate about it, it might be controversial, um, you kind of want to know these numbers, because you definitely don't want to bring a piece of, an ordinance forward and go through all the work and the legwork of doing that, and then all of a sudden, you know, it, you know, it, it not become law if that's what you, you as the chairperson were intending it to be, um, you know, without having the, the proper number of votes to, to pass it. Um, next on the list, I, I typed up, um, the committees, uh, who's on them, and then what, uh, committees are somewhat responsible for. Um, and this is just kind of a little bit of a laundry list. This definitely isn't etched in stone, but it gives me somewhat of a guide of what I think appropriate legislation or its requests are coming in from the mayor's office or the auditor's office or Sherry's office. To me, you know, which committee, you know, should have jurisdiction of, of handling that. Some things, I'm, I'm probably, yeah, that's fine, I'm probably going to do, um, uh, maybe a little bit different is kind of, and, and I made, if you look at those, I kind of made these committees, some of their jurisdictions fairly, um, uh, wide, I guess. Couple of things happened last year, I think I ran Jeremy off. He had forty-six committee assignments as the finance chair. Um, as, as the, as the end of the year kind of progressed, I realized there were some, um, yeah, there's a way of doing that where, you know, I, I would like, and it's not impossible, I mean, it's impossible, the, the work doesn't need to be equally, equally distributed, but, uh, somewhat shifting that workload a little bit, and, and justifying it as well. Um, uh, I'm going to try to do a little bit of better job at that this upcoming year, so one committee's not, you know, getting overloaded and, and others aren't. But for, for instance, we'll just kind of quickly go through the development committees, get chaired by Mrs. Ames, and her members are Mr. Bonner, Mr. Showman. Um, there are areas of responsibility against kind of a broad brush or economic development, community development, industrial retail and neighborhood development, um, zoning, annexation, land use, arts and entertainment, tourism, grants, um, JEDs, which, uh, joint economic development districts, uh, CRA's, community reinvestment areas. You guys haven't did one of those in a while for, have you? But it seemed like, uh, it seemed like when I was the chair of that committee, we were doing CRA's quite often. So I, that was something that I remembered. Uh, the downtown development commission, as well as, uh, things happening in the planning commission would kind of come under, under the development committee's privy. Uh, the engineering committee, it began to be chaired by Mr. Tapman, and, uh, Mrs. Patrick and Mr. Trutzel will serve on that committee. Um, there were areas of responsibility, again, some of them are very much the same, the board of zoning, building code enforcement, contract, contract registration, uh, watershed and stormwater, uh, flood wall, street and traffic lights, signs, streets, alleys, bridges, kind of that infrastructure end of that, uh, parking issues, um, long-range strategic planning for streets, alley repair, paving, et cetera. And then, and then basically, I also put what kind of city department may, as a department, fall more under that committee's privy, and obviously, the engineering committee would be the engineering department. Uh, the finance and investment committee is chaired this year by Mr. Trutzel, and Mrs. Ames and Mr. Pearl will serve on that committee. Uh, obviously, the areas of responsibility, finances, the city auditor and income tax, city treasurer's office, appropriations, the city's budget, both revenues and expenses, uh, the city self-insurance, investments, the city's bonds and notes, purchasing, and, uh, long-range financial planning for the city. Uh, the HR department or committee will be, again, chaired by Mrs. Gray, and Mrs. Patrick and Mrs. Ans will, uh, serve on that committee with her. And there is a responsibility is the EO office, the city HR department, civil service commission, human, human resources for the city employees in general, uh, union negotiations, unemployment workers' comp insurance, staff development, training, employee pension and retirements, medical insurance, OSHA, and long-range labor planning for the city. Uh, the parks and rec committee, uh, will be chaired by Mr. Bonner, and Mr. Trutzel and Mrs. Gray will serve on that committee. Parks and rec committee's areas of responsibility, pretty cut and dry, city parks. Uh, the parks and rec departments, those are two actually separate departments. Uh, the parks master plan, uh, festivals and parades, uh, parks vehicles, uh, capital and equipment, the, the actual parks themselves, city rec programs, swimming pool, the bike and walking paths, uh, parks and rec board, city tree commission, and long str, long-range strategic planning for the swimming pool and the parks and recs department, um, in general. And the safety services slash technology committee, and as we're getting down, I, that, um, technology end, I, I probably, I could definitely kept that, because the chairman of that's our most, uh, technical savvy guy we've got, uh, guy or gal we've got here. Um, and Mr. Pearl continued to chair that committee with Mrs. Gray and Mr. Tapman, uh, serving as well. Um, and within that committee, obviously, the police and fire departments in general, uh, fire, police vehicles, equipment, capital expenditures, um, also police and fire facilities. I want to make sure that, that the, the facilities as well are coming under the privy of whatever, uh, area. So the law complex, any issues there in all three fire stations, uh, Ross County Emergency Management, uh, long-range strategic planning for both police and fire departments, technology development and coordination, really for the city as a whole. I mean, so if the mayor or auditor or any of those technology kind of things are coming in, Dustin, they're probably going to, um, kind of chunnel those to you, because that's an area of expertise that you definitely have. And then also, the nine-one-one EMS, police, fire, communications and dispatching services also, um, will, will kind of fall under, um, that committee's responsibilities. And then we'll go to Mrs. Patrick, and we've sussed it up a few, and I named her committee very long, she, uh, you know, likes to have the nuisance thing come in, and she volunteered last year when we figured out that transit really didn't have a home. Uh, so, uh, that, that committee technically is the utilities transit slash nuisance committee. Um, that, that committee is, and Mrs. Patrick is, will continue to chair that with Mrs. Neal, Mr. Pearl, uh, serving with her. Uh, there is a responsibility, obviously, city utilities, the water sewer department, the Chillicothe Transit System, uh, the city water plant and the city's wastewater plant, the transit facility and garage, sewer lines, both service, maintenance service and rehab of those. Um, the liaison with also other public utilities, if it isn't going with the gas company, the electric company, cable, those kind of things, utility easements that need to be approved or not approved will go through the utilities committee. Um, and then, uh, long-range strategic planning for the utilities and transit departments. And then last but not least, her favorite, the nuisance issues, regulations, nuisance abatement board, as well as the water rate review committee will, will fall under the privy of, of that, uh, that committee. Uh, the city services committee, be chaired by Mrs. Neal, uh, Mr. Bonner, Mr. Showman, uh, will serve on that committee with them. Uh, there is a responsibility to the city service department, refuse pickup, recycling, uh, service department, vehicle, equipment, capital, streets kind of on the end, if not so much, uh, from the engineering end, we're getting actually repaved and, and having plans on that, would be more of the maintenance of the, the cleaning of the potholes, um, those kind of issues, line painting, those kind of things. All the service buildings will fall under the privy of that committee, uh, land and facilities as well as also the landfill. Uh, we're still responsible for landfill, we're not throwing trash in, it's still quite expensive. So anything coming up in relation to that will still go to the city services committee. And then, uh, last but not least, the community affairs committee will be chaired by Mr., uh, Showman, and, uh, will be served with, uh, Mrs. Neal and Mr. Tapman in that committee. There is a responsibility will be, uh, community affairs, public health, drug enforcement, uh, senior citizens, homeless, a liaison both, to kind of the other governmental entities, the Ross County Commissioners, township trustees, um, the schools...
Could you provide an executive summary maybe? I think we've had an executive summary just about every two weeks for the past nine months. The other thing I wanted to touch on, and this is kind of a good segue, is I was revisiting the issue of the garbage truck plan for 2014. And you'll recall, we have pledged $35,000 to purchase one garbage truck this year. The original plan was to purchase two, but when we started work through the budget details, it became apparent, at least at the time, that there wasn't the money for that. In thinking about it, we have our last outstanding note that didn't get rolled in with this bond issue coming due at the beginning of March, that's the water plant. Something that we can do is roll in debt with that water note, basically combining the cost of issuance, the attorney's fees and that sort of thing into one process instead of doing two different lending cycles, I guess, or periods. It wouldn't combine the money, but just like we had with this issue where we had several different notes combined into one issue, we could, and the reason to do that is to save essentially time and money. I've sent a committee assignment request to council president to revisit this issue because I think there's a good chance that we can potentially buy two this year trucks. And in all likelihood, our first payment will come next year when the note matured. The plan was 35 this year, and I believe the plan was purchasing the second truck next year. So in the long run, we may even come up with some savings by doing it this way, but I do think it's something we should explore. Again, that note matures the beginning of March, so we're on a bit of a timeframe if we want to do it, but I think it potentially makes a lot of sense. So we can get into more detail in committee, but I just wanted to give people a heads up with that because if we wanted to go three reads on it, basically the first read would have to be this coming meet, the second meeting in January. So that committee assignment request went out today. It's just something I've been sort of toying around with, and I talked to our underwriter today and seemed to make, think it made sense as well. I'm happy to answer any questions now. I haven't processed it too deeply, but I think committee, we'd have time to talk about it and talk about the advantages and disadvantages.
Just a quick comment on that, if I may. Mike and I talked about this last week, and what's the lead time on those trucks, Mike? It's like May?
Five months. So we could, in reality, because we talked about the scenario last week, and in reality, we could get the trucks by mid-year and not have to make a payment until next year. Is that what we were finding out about that? So really, we'd have the service of two trucks to have this year by doing that, but we'll nail down all those prospects and present them on a committee assignment.
I think that pretty well covers it. I wanted to know a timeframe because people are asking. I wanted to know just how quickly we'd be able to have something in hand.
My belief is that, so of course, you still go through the requisition purchaser. We've already got confirmed with Director Green earlier today that since we've already gone out to bid, we've got the builder locked in. As soon as the requisition is generated, and because the money has been appropriated for the year, now, there's only one truck in the budget listed on that capital list, so that would have to change. But my belief would be that as long as the requisition was generated, and the company could have assurance that there's a requisition purchaser process in place, that that process could probably begin before the money was actually borrowed at the beginning of March. So starting at, really, as soon as it was approved by council. So, and then that the bill time, Director Green was discussing. Unless anybody else has questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Auditor Feeney. Auditor Rutherford?
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead. I did realize that Teresa was so efficient. She's not even here. She made all these handouts that I didn't realize I had, so I'm going to pass those out. While I do that, I'm going to pat ourselves on the back just a little bit. The law director's office hosted a training, OBI seminar post in court last Friday. We had about 25 law enforcement officers, some from as far away from Cleveland, that came to get a training on OBI, testimony, writing reports and things like that. It's something that we feel very strongly about. And we were lucky enough to get the Ohio Department of Public Safety to come down. They put on the training for us, and we feel like it went very successfully. I also have to hand out some people in the audience, too, if you're interested. Since this is the first council of the new year, I'm going to tell you our report for 2013, the law director's office. We closed 3,372 criminal and traffic cases in the year 2013. And in parentheses, you'll see our numbers from last year, 2012. We had 120 ALS hearings. Those are the automatic license suspensions for people that get pulled over for OBI that either refuse tests or fail the test. We had 70 people enter the criminal diversion program. Forty-eight individuals completed the program in 2013. Four people were removed from the criminal diversion program. Forty-two people are still enrolled, and 33 people applied but weren't accepted. Fifty-two people entered our traffic diversion program. Forty-six people have completed it in 2013. Three people weren't accepted into the traffic diversion program. Twelve people have been accepted but are awaiting completion. And seven people were accepted in the program but failed to attend. Last year, our office gave out 48 written legal opinions to law enforcement, 12 legal opinions to administration and council, and we gave numerous unwritten or oral opinions over the phone and other ways. As far as pending litigation, we had three cases defended and litigated in federal court last year. Two of them have been resolved and only one remains pending. Thirteen cases defended in pending litigation. Those include foreclosures, different types of things like that. Five municipal court appeals cases were filed this year. Ten of those cases were closed in 2013. And four labor relation matters, two of those have been closed last year. We had no civil service cases for the year 2013. There were 18 bankruptcy cases filed with bankruptcy courts, and all that paperwork is directed to us. We prepared 107 ordinances and 19 resolutions. We've done two workers' compensation claims. Last year, we discontinued the collection of overdue water and income tax payments. However, collection records were provided to each of these departments, and individuals who were making payments were informed that beginning January 1 last year, payments would be directed to the appropriate department, mainly because the physician that handled that, the collections, is unfilled. However, in a cooperative spirit with Auditor Feeney, we are working together to work on collecting income tax costs due with the city. And we're currently working on getting, I think, what, 2010? We're going back three years and working forward from there. And that concludes, unless you have questions, and then please my report.
Okay, thank you. Auditor Rutherford, any questions for Sherri on her report? Okay, report from the chair. We kind of covered the initial things in our review session as far as council rules, regulations, what have you. Would like to comment as well on two of our sitting boys that lost their loved ones, Tamar Law and Fire Chief Creed. I'd like to ask the community to keep those great civil services and their families in our thoughts and prayers. And at this time, I would like our council to officially take a moment of silence to respect the loss of those loved ones for our boys. Thank you. I don't have anything other to report to the chair. When my committee assignment list will come out, you guys are going to want me to shut up, so I'll leave it at that. Audience participation? Any member of the audience wish to speak? Go to the podium. Council rule, 21 limits each speaker to five minutes, and each subject to 15.
My name's Alan Davis. I live at 370 Braywood. Just like to make a few comments on the status of our city streets and the maintenance. I did hand out something, which I think all of you got, so I'm not going to go through the wording on it. I think it's somewhat self-explanatory, but the schedules behind it might not be. And so I thought I'd take my few minutes just to go schedule by schedule so you'd understand, you know, what they are, what they show you, and maybe a little bit why I put it together. So we'll start with the real short one, and it's the first one. This is just sort of a summarization of a database that I put together. I created that database from the study that the engineering department did last spring, and they have identified segment by segment of our city streets what the status is. And they have 12 different ratings sections, and each one of those has potential negative points assigned to them. So in this particular case, you see, according to my summary of that database, which I think is pretty accurate, might have missed one or two things, they identified over 480 street segments, amounting to about 15 million square feet of streets. They keep track also of miles, and it's, I think, 19 miles is what it was. The column, the first column on the, let's see, that's the left, that shows row labels. What that is, is groupings of how many negative points each street, you know, the street segments had. So the zero to 10, let's just go across that row. I think once you see how that goes across, you'll understand the rest of the schedule. But there were 114 street segments out of the 481 that had either no defects identified, up to 10 defects in these 12 categories. So, you know, the assumption would be those streets were in really good shape. Then, what percent of the total square foot of our streets? That's about 29%. It's a little over 4 million square feet. And the average points, the last column is the average points for each one of those segments was about six, so they're right in the middle. Now, they go down the schedule, it's the same thing. What's the range of defect points that was summarized? How many segments was it? What percent of our square foot? How many square foot, and what was the average defects? So just to give a little status report from that perspective. I did, gray, to me, if a street segment got 21 points or more defects, then it was probably not in real good shape and probably needed to be addressed pretty soon. Someone might choose a different, you know, spot to gray, but that's what I did. Next one actually shows, in the middle two columns, it says sharing, yes, or blank. That means they keep track by each street segment whether or not the state or federal government pays for the, basically pays the cost of the deal. So I was able to summarize by, you know, those two categories. So, you know, again, the grand total, we have our 15 million, about 12 million of our square feet we're responsible for. Now, there may be other sources of funding that goes along with that, but that's, and then the 3 million is paid for by the state or the federal government. Now, the rows represent, when were they last paved? And they had details back to 1995, so they started anything after '94, and that shows when were those, you know, how much segments were asphalted in each one of those years by whether the state paid for it or we did. And then how, the blank means that those haven't been done since '94. Okay, next schedule, sort of the same thing, but just a little bit different look at it. It's by grouping, you know, again, if you remember the first one, the defect groupings. Then the last one, this shows, the bottom two shows for asphalting, what's the status? What group do they fall in? Goes across the page. And then what year were those last paved, for those that had been paved? So we see that some of them are already falling, that have been paved since '95 are already falling into a bad situation. The crack sealing is the bottom, and how many years have been cracked sealed? I guess that was my time. All I'd say is we need to work on our streets.
Alan, thank you for preparing this. So council, take a good look at that. Thank you. Any other members of the audience wish to address council? Okay, moving along. Old business? Any council members have any old business they would like to bring forward? Okay, moving on. Petitions and correspondence, Mr. Clerk?
I have nothing to report on, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you. New business, council members? Mr. Trutzel?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The mayor made an appointment this past week of Mr. Jeff Whalen, Parks and Rec. I want to support that appointment. I've known Mr. Whalen for a long time. He was a member of Parks and Rec for several years. And he got transferred out of town, and now he's back, and I think this is an opportunity for us to get a quality person involved in Parks and Rec. May I just support that? I'm at that motion.
I'm going to make the motion to appoint Mr. Whalen to the Parks and Rec Board, seconded by Mrs. Ames. And I would concur with Tom. I've known Jeff for many moons. He's a good guy, circled on that board admirably many years. Roll call on the appointment of Mr. Whalen to the Parks and Rec Board.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Mr. Whalen is appointed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making that appointment. You did a fine job. Any other new business? Mrs. Patrick?
I just have two things, actually, because that, a couple of weeks ago, did an article about the improvements that were made last year in the city. The one thing you guys forgot was Washington Avenue. We put $100,000 down there, and they've got curb, gutter, storm drainage, and sidewalks on the north side. And it's made a big difference. The heavy rains we had, normally those properties down through there had been mud, and it worked great. So that's a real plus for that. And then I would just like to make a comment on committee assignment number 1406, and that's the one about the composition of the nuisance abatement board. I personally feel like there is a conflict with me handling this, since I chair the nuisance abatement board. Would you mind assigning?
I will reassign it, absolutely, Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you.
That is not a problem.
I'm done.
And I would concur with Mrs. Patrick, not just the Washington Avenue, but the investment the city has made in all of kind of the president's street neighborhood with curbs and gutters over the last, at least, 10 years has really improved those neighborhoods tremendously. So I would concur with the point that. Mr. Bonner?
Oh, thank you, President Reinhardt. Just to expand a little bit on something the mayor already talked about, the new beginnings. Mr. Scott McGill called me, wanted to invite all of council, mayor, auditor. This is going to be about an hour program, kind of a drama, dealing with drugs and all this devastation they bring. If anyone has any questions, they can contact Mr. McGill. He'd be more than happy to give you information. His number is 701-8049.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Any other new business? Okay, Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Somebody handed me a 1968 Chillicothe Gazette, and I thought I'd bring it in because I've been reading over it. This has to do with downtown development, and I thought it was entertaining. Apparently, it's '67, and somebody might remember this, I'm not sure. Thurman was on council at that time. But anyhow, they closed down Paint Street between Main and Second, and made a mall for downtown. They added trees and bushes and places to sit. All right, '67, that was done. '68, the mayor and the council was pinned against the wall, and the vote that year to dismantle it was seven to one. So the reason I'm bringing this up, because it's very important, but there's a couple quotes I wanted to give you that I got out of the paper. And one of the quotes was, "If we go back to where we started, that is where it will stay for the next 50 years." 1968, 2014, almost 50 years. So that's how long we've been working with this downtown project. Some other things was, I got a copy of petitions, and these people that signed the petition, there's four pages. These all have Paint Street, Second Street, Main Street, business owners that probably originally okayed this project and then turned around and killed the project because it didn't work. So, I mean, we've got to be cautious in what we do to help downtown. Of course, there's other things we've got to consider, too. Another quote I want to give you is, and this is the 1968 quote of a person that ran a business down there. I won't tell you who it is, but, "If a merchant has what a customer wants at a price a customer is willing to pay, they will come to you regardless." Well, that's not necessarily necessarily true with retail. I mean, you saw what Bridge Street, now, this is '66, '64, I think, when the Chillicothe Mall was built. Central Center had already been built in the late '50s. There were still businesses downtown, but everybody was headed up Bridge Street. So we've got to be very careful. Another thing, too, I want to bring up, I guess, the economic issues in 1968. The mayor at that time went to Columbus to protest the state legislature because they was taking over the pension plan from the cities. That was 1968. And the quote on that one was, "State legislature can take full credit of bankrupting our cities." So this seems to be a vicious circle that we're going in. But I thought that would be entertaining. I passed the papers out, but they're getting kind of brittle. And I did point out, too, our reporter over there, that we used to, did have, we did have a nice paper. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Dave. That is, that is great. And for note, in '67, I was not born then, so I don't make a note of that. I can't remember any of that.
I looked at Tom, and my wife reminded me that the street was closed down. But back in '68, the only thing I was worried about was $5 for a full tank of gas and the Sunburger and the Boeing Alley and the BPS.
Absolutely. Dave, thank you for bringing that forward. One, it's entertaining, but it's very relevant to what we're embarking on this year. So any other new business? I don't think you're, you're going to top that, Mrs.?
No, I can't top that by any stretch.
Okay, Mrs. Gray, go ahead.
I should have gone before him so that he could, let it go. Not to belabor the point, but I would like to request that a strategic planning process be put into place so that we can have a document, if you will, to guide us through this year.
Absolutely.
So that we can be proactive rather than reactive with regard to our issues.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to give a few out-of-boys to our service department. Back in the middle of December, we had some serious weather and cold weather and snow, and our guys worked all night, taking the streets taken care of as best they could. And then, these are the same people that pick up our trash. Many, many people don't realize that we have a small staff down there that's doing a big job and just to let everybody know that I really believe that these guys need a lot of pats on the back. They've done a great job.
I would second that comment, absolutely. Mrs. Patrick?
I'd like to, you know, tell you on that, that's absolutely true, but also include the utility workers. Waterline breaks in this temperature and the cold and that water, that's nasty, but those guys are trying to do, especially the service crew, just trying to do more of a blast and stuff.
Okay, I would be remiss as a son of a firefighter. I think the fire department went out on a few frigid put-outs as well, and it's no fun getting up a water hose and spraying down a burning building when it's zero degrees. So I think the consensus would be, I'd say all the city crews have served us admirably as the taxpayers and the citizens of this community. Let's face it, what was probably the coldest time I can remember, if we're going back in history, I would say to what, '76, '78, is your blizzard time? I mean, that was pretty brutal out there, so, yeah, thank you guys for bringing that up. And Mr. Mayor, if you'll pass that along to the crew and Mr. Green as well, as we really appreciate it. I know a lot of times they, you know, get the brunt end of things, and they've, and I've had, you know, very good comments from neighbors and family members as well, very much appreciated. Next up is committee assignments and meeting dates. And as to all the flattering of emails and getting everything rolling, you guys ready? Okay, the committee assignments made for the first of the year include 1401 to Development Committee, request for legislation creating a permanent downtown Chillicothe Development Commission, that is carryover 13-115. We had a very excellent Development Committee meeting on that last week. I want to thank the mayor and Mrs. Ames for their presentation. 14-02 to Development Committee, request for legislation assigning a progressive fine fee and penalty structure for zoning violations, that's carryover from 13-65 of last year. 14-03 to Development Committee, request for Council Actional Planning Commission recommendation for zoning change from R3 to R0 at 171 East Fifth Street. 14-04 Development Committee, request for legislation authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Walter Drain Company to prepare replacement pages for the codified ordinances. 14-05 to the Utilities/Transit Committee, request for legislation to update the city's sewer use ordinance by establishing Section 911.17, regulating oil and gas, or oil and grease, that's carryover of 13-132 from last year. The Utilities and Transit Committee, request for legislation to amend 136.04, the nuisance abatement board organization and member, and I will reassign that to an appropriate committee per Mrs. Patrick's request. 14-070 Utilities/Transit Committee, request for legislation accepting utility easement for Clayburn Heights. 14-08 to the Safety Services Committee, request for legislation authorizing the city and MBI to hard-bill non-residents for EMS squad runs by Chillicothe Fire Department, that is carryover assignment 13-125. 14-09 to the Safety Services Committee, request for council to investigate the bowling issue in City of Chillicothe and adopt legislation if warranted. That also is a carryover assignment from last year. 14-10 to Safety Services Committee, request for council committee to review the 2014 capital expenditures in the Chillicothe Fire Department and make the appropriate approvals and appropriations as deemed. 14-11 to the Parks and Rec Committee, request for legislation granting the use of the city parks and surrounding streets for the annual tour of Sider Valley. 14-12 to the City Services Committee, request for council committee to update the codified ordinance, Chapter 721, regarding taxi cab service and licensing, that's carryover for 13-44. I must say, Mr. Bonner, you reported that you've kind of got some stuff that's already been in the works, so, Mrs. Neal, as far as moving that forward, I think things are already kind of established there. I don't think you would, the committee specifically needs to take action, it just needs to be brought forward, so as that comes forward, if you want to take action on Sherri's recommendations. 14-13 to Engineering Committee, request for legislation allowing the Rivers Edge Golf Course to post signage at City Rideaway at the corner of Bridge Street and Pawnee, that's carryover 1379. 14-14, the Engineering Committee, request for council, studying the ODOT proposed project on Route 50 from Cortlandt to Stanhope, is another carryover assignment. The Engineering Committee is 14-15, a request for legislation to provide additional parking spaces for city and county employees who work in the law complex and the Ross County Courthouse. 14-16, the Engineering Committee, request for council to consider the feasibility of changing Second Street from Mulberry to Walnut back to two-way traffic. 14-17, the Engineering Committee, request for legislation pertaining to bench advertising on Bridge and Main Street. 14-18, the Engineering Committee, request for legislation approving the ODOT project, PID 97178, as it pertains to improvements on Route 50 from Limestone Boulevard to St. Andrews. 14-19 to the Human Resources Committee, request for legislation to modify the transit director's salary. 14-20 to the Human Resources Committee, request for legislation to approve the position of transit administrative clerk. 14-21 to the Human Resources Committee, request for legislation modifying the civil service coordinator position from full-time to part-time. 14-22, the Finance Committee, request for legislation to bring forward certain purchase orders from the year 2013. And 14, last but not least, 14-23 to the Finance Committee, request for council to investigate imposing a $5 per-vehicle licenser fee, per-vehicle within the city limits of Chillicothe. And again, that was a carryover of 13-126, where things have been discussed, as that may be a possible finance way of, I think we were talking about, for streets and alleys. And that is it.
That it was to go up to $20.
What's that? And that is it. Obviously, we're starting off this year just as busy as we- streets and alleys. And that is it.
That it was to go up to twenty bucks.
What's that? And that is it. Obviously, we're starting off this year just as busy as we ended last year. Okay, that moves us to legislation. Item number one.
Second reading of an ordinance, providing for an agreement between the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and the Ross County Commissioners, whereby the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, will continue to be eligible for state reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing council for indigent criminal defendants and declaring emergency. Second reading.
An additional action? Very good. Gray?
Thank you, President Reinhart. I make the motion adjourned.
Seconded by Mrs. Ames. Motion for adjournment.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.